Reopen our meeting from recess yesterday. This is the Border County Commissioners' regular meeting. It's Wednesday, July 9th, 2025. We have a couple of work sessions to finish up our agenda for the week, starting with the Lane County Special Utility Districts with our own Jason Harris with us today. And Jason, if you have anyone else to introduce, please go ahead and take it away, sir.
Yes. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Jason Harris, Lane County Community Economic Development Manager, joining me today to really add additional colored commentary and really, probably more importantly, respond to questions, inquiries from the Board, Dan Hurley, Public Works Director, Rob Woodard, Special Districts Project Manager, my colleagues, Samantha Roberts, and our special guest Courtney Flathers, Governor's Office Regional Solutions Team that I want to recognize for in the presentation today. The purpose of this work session is really to provide the Board with an overview of our Water and Sanitation Special Utility Districts located within Lane County, the challenges they face, the range of options to address these challenges. Additionally, kind of highlight the work that the county and our partner agency efforts have been involved in to assist in supporting these, which I use the acronym SUDS, Special Utility Districts, the challenges they're facing. So let me jump into this. So really just highlighted a bit of that overview. You know, this has been an ongoing issue of assistance and challenges of special districts. This is really meant to kind of establish a baseline, understanding of the range of special districts and really to highlight the really unique and substantive challenges they're facing. So just to kind of set the table for us all, special districts, they are effectively a form of local government when there is no local government in place. They're created and operated under state law. They provide specific services and typically perform a single function and most rely exclusively on service fees for operating revenue. And today's presentation is really uniquely focused on the water special districts and the sanitation special districts. We have a range of special districts, emergency services, et cetera, but we're really focusing on those two utilities specifically because those are, as we, you know, can imagine, really life safety required for daily use, having sanitation and water services. And really, I think the issue comes down to these special districts, they have to provide the full range of services. So they have to administer their districts, the personnel, the financial administration, in addition to the operation and maintenance. And then, as you'll hear, out of all of our over 400 special utility districts, we only have seven that actually have tax levy functions. And so almost the majority are all revenue-based. So to kind of highlight the range and scope, just within the water special districts, the Oregon Health Authority lists 320 permitted special water districts in Lane County. And then, as we're analyzing this, we really look at that number. 98 are residential serving. 122 are commercial, 47 are parks and campgrounds, 41 are schools and churches, and 12 are cities. But we're particularly focused on the 98 that are serving residential groups, communities. And as you'll see, kind of in the attachment that's associated to the staff memo, we've highlighted that. As you'll see, most of those are, you know, trailer parks, mobile home parks, RV parks, things of that nature, of the residential serving. And then our sanitation districts, it's a smaller group. There's 88 in total. 19 of those are serving residential groups, about 21% of the total. 30 are government city functions, and then 39 are recreational and commercial. So taking those numbers into effect, you know, we're really looking at 117 utility districts that are serving residential communities. We're really focusing in on that number specifically. And as I highlighted earlier, for about a decade plus, there have been instances when some of these utility districts have asked for assistance, technical assistance, financial assistance to help with their operations. Going back to Dexter, both their sanitation districts and serving in that area, obviously more recently with Blue River in rebuilding, and then Mapleton most recently. The range of assistance is really kind of in two work groups within the county, Public Works, to the point that Rob Woodard, in Public Works position was created, providing really critical project management and technical assistance, particularly Blue River, but those other community districts that I referenced, Mapleton extensively. The land management division has a role in adopting the community plans and pursuing those in the case of Blue River, with trying to add some density opportunities to increase the user base there. And then, within county administration, within our policy division, our grants management have been working for years at CDBG funding, FEMA applications, assisting these districts, community economic development, providing project coordination. And then our intergovernmental affairs office with legislation and advocacy. We'll have some report outs to mention there. And this is just within the county. When we expand out, it actually takes a village throughout the state to assist. And that's really wanted to recognize, Courtney Flathers with Regional Solutions. She's been such a principal team member of really providing really technical project management assistance and bringing a wide range of resource agencies together on a very frequent basis. In the case of Mapleton, we'd be meeting monthly for over a year. She's recently stepped in to assist in some other communities and special districts there, really technical assistance and financial gathering. Also like to call out Business Oregon. They're just an amazing organization. They have a function called One Stops, where they'll bring all of the funding agencies, both state and federal, together to meet with special districts and cities that have infrastructure challenges and review the needs and try to match financial resources to those needs. And then, we're also very fortunate to have some great technical assistance organizations, Wellam and Partners and the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, providing really substantive technical assistance. And if you can imagine, to apply for funding, you have to have, you know, preliminary assessment reports and engineering reports. And all of that work takes, can really overwhelm these small districts in their project management oversight and all of these agencies step forward. And then, there is other roles of, obviously, the state and federal partnerships, EPA and USDA, in particular with their funding programs. Philanthropy's kicked in in instances, as well as, I like to call it, E-Web, Water and Electric Board. They are kind of a last stop when there's an emergency situation that helps stand up some water services when there has been no water in some instances in some of these communities. So the challenges, they're really wide and varied. Principally, they're in twofold areas, operationally and financially. Operationally, these are complex infrastructure systems that require constant maintenance, capital repair, emergency responsiveness based upon, you know, storm damage, et cetera. And then, that then kicks in the financial challenges. The amount of funding required to operate these systems, maintain them, do the capital replacement, in many instances, can overwhelm these small districts. They have small revenue user fee base that work from. Their constituents are in kind of an Alice asset, limited income constrained, maybe employed or retired conditions. And so their ability to increase fees is very limited. And so their ability to take on debt is limited. And then, obviously, the populations are limited in scope in these communities. So those are the principal challenges we see routinely. But additionally, on top of those, there's regulatory and environmental challenges that just exasperate the issues of management. So obviously, these districts have to meet the regulatory requirements and compliance that's just required with the permitting through OHHA, Oregon Health Authority, for the water districts, and Department of Environmental Quality for the sanitation districts. And then, the environmental challenges, we all know, we have a warming climate, we have more severe weather events, we have challenging groundwater conditions for those water systems, also challenging water conditions for sanitation systems as they're trying to operate those in high rainfall areas. And so this just adds to the complexity of operating complex systems. In many instances, these are being managed by local residents that don't have formal training of financial systems or operating systems that certified. Water operators are very scarce, and it takes 10 years of training to get to that compliance condition. So that's where the technical assistance comes in. That's so important.
Mr. Woodard, can we break for a question just real quick? I'm sorry.
Yes. Go ahead. You'll probably cover this zoning issues, land use issues.
Most definitely. The, you know, where you can place these systems is obviously a challenge. But more importantly, the need for communities to potentially add users, add residents, add businesses. You know, we've had FEMA update floodplain maps. So just in the case of Mapleton, their system, their sanitation system has capacity. They could add users. And they have industrial lands, but their industrial lands are now all within a floodplain that is under new FEMA rules, is effectively prohibited to be developed.
And diminishes their ability to raise fees or that sort of thing.
Exactly.
We don't need to go into too much depth on that, but understand that is a big issue. Almost everything we face has a zoning or land use issue.
Most definitely. So as such, the types of assistance that we see, obviously, funding is a consistent one, the operational capital need. And then, just to put a kind of exclamation point to that, a lot of the funding resources will only go to capital. There's very few funding programs that support operational maintenance needs. And so that's just kind of a constant ball and chain of kind of trying to keep up with operational costs that just inflationary, labor, materials, et cetera, constantly rising. Many of these districts really haven't kept up with fee rates and just capital replacement. So that's always a constant we see throughout is funding a support assistance requirement. The technical assistance as well of going through the grant processes is really challenging. And so, you know, calling out Wellam and Partners and RCAC are really great, as well as all the state agencies, and facilitating grant application assistance. And then, just reconciling conflicts with county infrastructure. Many times, these systems, the distribution lines, et cetera, are in alignment or even under county assets, be it drainage culverts, roadways, right-of-way areas. And so, thanks to Mr. Woodard, he's been very helpful in facilitating that reconciliation of just kind of infrastructure conflicts as, you know, those systems go into disrepair and then affect county assets. And then, regulatory compliance, this is a challenging one as well. We really can't assist too much in the permitting of compliance because we don't operate these systems. So they have to meet the state requirements and building code requirements. But when there are technical issues from a regulatory standpoint that we can assist in, specifically in the case of kind of merger and formation processes, we play a role, the county, as well as in legislative efforts. I'll just use this opportunity to highlight this past legislative session. We stood up a House Bill 3910. This made a modification to Oregon statute regarding water districts. And we've made a modification. We had Representative Wright assist and sponsor that bill, and it made it through the legislation. And the governor signed that. Effectively, it eased the requirements of water districts and able to merge their sanitation districts and bring on sanitation powers. This was particular to Mapleton, where their sanitation district is really in dire needs of administrative support, as well as financial and operational support. The water district's strengthened and is in a position to take on the sanitation powers. But the traditional process of dissolution and formation of these districts is about two years. Mapleton doesn't have two years to facilitate that process. I'd like to recognize the Vice Chair, Senega, who testified both in the House and Senate Committee Process to support the legislation. And it was key in getting that legislation adopted. And now, the Mapleton Water District's in the process of taking on sanitation authorities. And so that's just one example, but that's also a statewide leadership role for the county taking on, because this is a statewide effort. And we're not alone of having struggling special districts in our county. This is a shared state challenge, and we believe this will be an asset to allow other districts to be able to merge their powers.
Mr. Harris, let me ask this if I could. When you mentioned Mapleton and their industrial lands now being in a FEMA floodplain, is there any discussion about if there's any takings of value by the government lost by a local municipality? In the case of Mapleton, that was on the table for economic income at some point. Now, it's not. It's almost a form of eminent domain, in a sense? Is there a reconciliation for that?
Not that I have heard, Chair. And that is recently new regulation that was adopted last year. And so the jurisdictions across the state are still reconciling how to address that issue. And, you know, that's, in the scheme of things, you know, impactful for those jurisdictions that have waterways that are being impacted. And we're still kind of sifting through kind of the range. Florence, for instance, obviously surrounded by waterways, greatly impacted with that decision. And so, we're kind of working through all of the state agencies and evaluating options there. Thank you. So obviously, I don't think it's hard to imagine the consequences of district failure, the utility district failure, right? In the case of sanitation districts or even water districts, you can have, you know, risk to public health. So we've had boil notices go out. We've had notices of potential water contamination in the Dexter region in the past. Obviously, environmental impacts when you have, you know, unprocessed waste impacting the waterways. The financial impacts are very dire to residents, right? Not having consistency to rate and fees, as well as, obviously, when there's shut-off notices and then they're having to make adjustments to kind of lifestyle and receive assistance through other means. And then, on a longer-term basis, we can see degradation of our rural communities, right? Of loss of residents and businesses ultimately impacts the property values and property tax revenues if we can't reconcile these challenges. So we have, Public Works and the Policy Division have been thinking through the range of approaches. Some of these have just been naturally pursued. In the case of community overlay zone, we've pursued that in Blue River to just really increase density of population and business opportunities, at the same time reconciling the utility demands of having increased residents. And so, this is a fine balance. And maybe there's a lot of challenge and limitation of applying this approach. But in some instances, this can be a base to address the issue, increasing user base, increasing user fees, adding additional population. Because one of the challenges we find throughout these districts is a limited resident base in order to volunteer to be on the boards and effectively volunteer managers. Again, they have very limited staffing. And so, you know, any opportunity to add users and new residents to support the systems is welcomed. We also look to where there's opportunity for cost savings through district, not necessarily consolidation, but sharing of resource. So in the case of the Rainbow Water District, they've been assisting the Shangri-La Water District in a contractual manner. Again, this means and methods really only works well when you have adjacency. When you have to start spanning large distances, you lose the cost efficiency of shared staffing and other resources. You know, worst-case scenario, district dissolution is always an option, but that's very rarely the case, just because in most instances, these districts were stood up because there wasn't an ability for residents or businesses to self-serve, be it the groundwater has higher arsenic in many instances, that just can't be addressed through a private well condition. There's waterways throughout our region that limit septic systems. And so, you know, going towards, you know, a larger shared system is typically the approach and why many communities have pursued this option of having a district. So dissolution is not necessarily, it's really a last case and worst-case scenario. The merger of sanitation and water districts is a new approach. But again, adjacency and having commonality of shared resources and shared service areas is probably where we'll find the most opportunity to do so. In the case of Mapleton, we had that issue. And there could be others as we evaluate these districts going forward in the future. And then, just lastly, we're in evaluation, and we're looking for board feedback on the idea of standing up a county utility service district, or at least evaluating the possibility. We have two sister counties in our region, Benton and Marion Counties, have taken this approach. This is really a, maybe again, in a last-step effort of standing up in a contingency of a utility district authority so that if you have a complete dissolution of a special district, it's not necessarily the loss of a community at a whole that the county could provide that service, obviously take on the administration and operation aspects. So it wouldn't be fully borne at county cost, but there is some potential expense associated to this. And so, there is the possibility of studying the possibility. And this runs in concurrence of evaluating the 117 water and sanitation districts to get an assessment of who's at risk and getting ahead of this. Because right now, we're just being reactive, right? When they have a failure, when they have, you know, a loss of operation, that's when they're typically reaching out for assistance. So we're trying to be proactive, but this is challenging, right? These are folks that are working full-time jobs and then have this secondary volunteer job. And now, we come knocking saying, how can we help? How can we assist? We're engaged with the University of Oregon's Policy Lab in helping conduct this assessment. But I think it's going to be a long road just because of that limited access to these district staff to make that assessment. So really, before today are the next steps that we wanted to call out. As I just referenced, we're in this process of doing this technical, financial, and management health of our districts. We're starting with the sanitation districts, the smaller group out of 119 out of the 117 of all of those districts, with the intent to move into the water districts following. Land management is concurrently evaluating future community overlay opportunities. And so, this is just additional factor for consideration. Is there a special district in a community as they evaluate an overlay district? If so, what's the strength of that district? So this is kind of leading into the report card assessment process. As I referenced, the county services district authority model is one, is really kind of a fail-safe fallback condition to have potentially in place. Most probable, and I think the highest practicality, is really education campaign to be proactive in reaching out to special districts and ensuring that they're, you know, conducting their operations with best practice, that they're staying on top of their fee schedules and their capital replacement schedules. And, you know, this will involve engagement with the Special Districts Authority of Oregon and other entities to really provide that kind of practical support and assistance. And then, I think kind of really, on a longer-term basis, this report's leading to a larger policy discussion on allocation of assistance. As to date and as of now, the area of assistance requests has been, you know, kind of reactive and somewhat singular, and so it has been manageable. But just in the case of Mapleton, and the staff report highlights that, the level of assistance and need that's been provided over the past few years, you know, has been pretty extensive. I mean, it's equivalent of like two FTEs, full-time positions of assisting that community, importantly. But there is a greater kind of policy, is that what is the allocation? You could also extend that evaluation into the conversation of our community development block grants. We can only apply for and have three in operation at a time. And so, as we're looking just to county needs, how do we apply that ability to handle community development block grants and apply for and prioritize in conjunction with trying to assist and support our special districts throughout the county in concurrents? So we're still thinking through all of those policy implications. But, you know, I think, you know, bringing this information forward, establishing the baseline, getting the Board's kind of input and assessment at this stage is really critical. And with that, this really concludes the presentation. And we're really open for questions. And my colleagues and partners that are here today are happy to provide that feedback. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. To the Board. Who's got the easy answer?
I'll start.
Please go ahead, Ms. Wood.
I think, you know, Commissioner Senega and I are dealing with this quite a lot just because in the rural communities, we have so many of the special districts. I get calls on it on a pretty regular basis, and I work with you, Rob, quite a bit, as I'm sure you do, too. There, I get calls often of people who are volunteering on the boards of these, and they don't, they're kind of want to retire, and they're worried that there's nobody else in the community to take their spot. And we have no board members, then the district doesn't function. And that happens periodically. Luckily, we've always been able to kind of... Luckily, we've always been able to kind of help them out and find a way to keep them going, but there's, I think there's coming times where there's just not going to be the available people. Often, they don't have the capital construction accounts that they've needed, they are, let alone not making sure that they can get enough money to just operate on a daily basis, but the capital construction costs for replacement is generally not part of the income that they're asking from residents for the systems and then that leaves them at the end of their lifespan with no money for replacement. And I find that very, happening very often and leading us to this place where we're trying to find grant money for them to apply for and then we get grant money, like brick money or whatnot, and then it disappears. That's really challenging and it's not little money, it's big money for these kinds of systems. I've been working on a few of these. Of course, one of the bigger ones is Cresswell that Commissioner Farr and I have been working on where they now have moratoriums on development. So if we don't solve the infrastructure problem, we can't solve the housing problem, it's all related. You know, I understand and would support looking at a county system and exploring it. My concern is right now that these are managed by volunteers largely. That helps keeps the cost down. If we eventually lead to a county utility service district, that could be a fallback if one really is in big trouble and can't operate, but the expense for the county to manage those systems on their behalf is going to be more because we will be paying people their regular wages in order to manage these systems. And right now, they're being managed by volunteer, often by volunteer community members. So we just have to understand that that's going to be an additional cost to the community where they're already oftentimes burdened due to loan compounding, not being able to afford it. I don't think it's really an option to dissolve some of these because people can't afford to put in a well and a septic on their own, their lots can be too small to even, that's not even an option for them and then the value of their home has gone to zero because they can't resell it for its current value. So we have to find a solution because dissolution is, in my mind, just not an option. I think it will be great to see if our Policy Lab team can come up with some more in-depth review and solution of what a county utility service district could actually become. My concern though will continue to be that that will be an expensive solution for residents, but it in some cases may be the only solution.
Vice Chair and Commissioner Farr. Well, that was a great rundown. That's exactly what we're dealing with. And these volunteer boards, it's created its own monster because somebody comes in and wants to look at rates. What are we paying? And then actually make everybody pay for water. Well, next thing you know, they're voted off the board. I mean, just since I've been doing this, I've watched that happen. You get somebody that comes in and says, well, we've got to build these accounts because look at all the deferred maintenance, we've got to address this stuff. Well, that's nonsense and then they're gone. So I don't, if I was looking at it and something that would be interesting to look into is somehow, and it's probably not going to be real popular, but somehow does the county set the rates in those districts and say, no, this is what it takes. This percentage goes to future maintenance, new skids, new filters and maybe take that sort of approach because we've talked about what a county-run water district's going to look like and just like you said, it's going to be expensive. I mean, and these people can't afford their own wells, they can't afford their own sewer systems if they could install them. So what do we do? And we've got, it's going to get worse because all these systems were put in 50s, 60s and nothing's been done to them. And you get an operator change, some operator's been there for 25-plus years and he knows how the system runs, somebody else comes in, boosts the pressure, does something and that's when you start seeing Mapleton-type issues and concerns is when you get an operator change that doesn't really understand the system. So what our level of involvement is, I have not a clue, but I do know we do need to be involved in it somehow. It's not working currently.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair. And thanks for the great presentation. You know, it really elevates the attention on, what do we say, 320 water districts, 88 sanitation districts and some merged districts and that doesn't include larger districts. I don't think it includes Cresswell, for instance. So we have to find solutions and we have to reduce impediments. What are the impediments to the operation of districts? Now, we can't talk about that at length of day, but we look at the challenges facing SUD as regulatory and environmental. There are lots of regulatory challenges and environmental challenges continuing to compound each other and make it even more district difficult to use land and to use land for the purposes that districts that were formed long before Senate Bill 100 and long before floodplains, the districts were formed with a mission that included full use of the area inside of the district. They don't have that anymore. What can we do about that? Well, we can't wring our hands about it, we have to do things about something about that and we have a different strategy that we need to employ there regarding environmental and regulatory challenges that these districts have because they can't fail because people live there. The people wake up in the morning, take their kids to school right there in that district, whether it's wherever it may be, all the stretches of Lane County. And I'm not going to wring my hands, but I'm going to say this, that we do have models of consolidation in other areas of government that really do work, the ESDs, for instance, that cover large areas. Lane ESD provides services that smaller districts cannot do themselves, that the boards who have a job and have kids to take to school and who's more interested in reducing fees and improving infrastructure, that they can't perform. So the special district, the county utility district, I think is what you called it, the, yeah, consideration of the county services district. Certainly that. Another example of that is a COG, you know, a council of governments which we benefit from at Lane County. They do things that would be really prohibited for us to be able to do, things that we count on. Well, can we do that with districts? And is it right for the county or an association of counties to be the hub for that? I don't know, but it's something that we need to explore because in a district that you can't even afford a notebook, let alone a new well, you know, it's, you know, how do you provide them with the services? Well, that's the kind of thinking that we have to have. And, you know, we're, some areas are trying to go away from councils of governments and COGs and the ESDs and various unsoldated services, but they work, particularly in under-resourced areas that are sometimes adjacent to more resourced areas. Now, one solution obviously is if you can merge with an adjacent large utility, larger, even if it's a special utility district, you can merge and combine your boards, your resources, et cetera. And that's what we're trying to do with Cresswell is bring Cresswell into NWMC. Wonderful, because it solves a lot of solutions, including environmental and including regulatory once you get past those hurdles. So I'm not answering any questions there, but given a direction that we need to go is how do we give them a chance to do the things that they have to do by reducing impediments to them doing it and increasing their resources? And you can't do it by fees and clearly you can't do it by debt because you cannot service the debt. So how can we do that without, what's the magical way? Well, you know, neighbors get together and help neighbors. So that kind of consolidation is something I would love to consider. And when you say consideration of a county services district, in one slide you talked about Marion and Benton County and I'm not sure if you meant Lane, Marion, Benton and that, or if Marion and Benton are doing something already, kind of a weird association with this Marion and Benton, but, you know, that direction, I'm really interested, I'm really interested in hearing that, putting resources into it and I'm really excited about the Policy Lab eyeballing it because they have brilliant sets of minds. So, you know, I didn't answer any questions, but raised possible directions for solution.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, really interesting and great to have it all in one place. I had one just direct question before I ask a few sort of constellation of more next steps related to Commissioner Farr's point, the Marion Benton, is there something in place or being considered?
So Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner Farr, to clarify, the Marion Benton, I just combined the description, individually each county had formed a county utility authority to take on defaulting special districts in their county. So they, the two counties haven't merged, they just, I just should have put an and between the two.
A comma, right, so they each have a program.
A county utility authority, yes.
But it's sort of a backstop program, it's not an active proactive, it's there if a district fails, there's a safety net.
Correct.
Okay, interesting. I'm also glad Commissioner Farr brought up the ESD model, for example, because it doesn't supplant the individual school districts, it provides a sort of wraparound of, like backfilling of some of the services that each individual district doesn't have equitable resource to fill. So that's a really interesting model and I'm sure Policy Lab is aware of it and would consider, you know, the different ways to structure, were we to have something like a county services district, that that's a model. Are we only talking about water and sanitation districts because we have, you know, fire, library, parks, we have lots of districts that also have some of these same challenges around aging infrastructure and also volunteers in the case of the fire districts, I know even are most recently formed. Not only are these folks working full-time and volunteering as elected board members, but then they're also the ones going out fighting fires, for example. So for the purposes of, is that something Policy Lab would be separating out? What if it was just water and sanitation? What if it was all special districts? How are they slicing and dicing that problem?
Yes, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, that's a great question of clarification. We've focused in on the utility districts in particular just because of the unique challenges and needs that they face. There is commonality in other special districts of having limited revenue and operating costs exceeding the revenue basis, but we've just prioritized this class in particular and then to kind of further that, out of the over 400 utility districts, we've even sub-prioritized those to call out the 117, I believe, that are residential serving in particular. Just prioritizing that, you know, the district serving residents, that's a 24/7, you know, kind of quality of life requirement versus a campground or a business that might be served by a special, you know, a special utility district and so. But I think to the greater question as we're evaluating, for instance, the emergency services, special districts challenges, you know, are there takeaways that can inform? And I think it's really insightful feedback of considering kind of this ESD, Education Service District model, maybe something in lieu of a county authority and so we'll add that to the policy evaluation.
Thank you, and I appreciate that we can't consider being all things to all people, but I would imagine, again, Policy Lab will look at different ways of combining and organizing that makes sense, like with the, you know, the fire districts, again, that is, personally, I think schools and library districts and park districts are critically important to quality of life, but they're a different flavor than these sort of sanitation issues, water issues, and I would add, you know, fire in that case. And they're going to have different needs as far as providing sort of overarching support. I'm really interested in the types of need assistance slide you had and how it kind of goes with the next step slide. The education campaign for best practices and resources in particular and then developing county policy on allocation of assistance, those kind of go together-ish? It's a little for, it's your next step slide that I'm talking about right now, if you're, yeah. I mean, yeah, we want to make sure these districts knows the resources that are already available to them, we don't need to recreate the wheel, we just need to make it available. I wonder how that blends with allocation of assistance. I think I'm understanding you to say assistance is maybe actual person hours, doing some of the administrative work or what have you. It's not just like, we're not just a, we're not a funding source necessarily, is that right?
Correct. Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner, yes.
So the, for example, education campaign about resources might be these grants are available to you and then allocation on assistance might be, and we can provide yea much FTE to help you apply for that. Like, is that an example? Okay, just making sure I understood the difference of those things. The last two things I'll say, I just have to say, the funding resources are diminishing and the costs to meet the needs are increasing. I believe, unless you know, this might be something when Steve Adams is back, but CDBG funding is potentially in its entirety being eliminated at the federal level, maybe being moved to a different state-by-state structure, but we don't know and we don't know what we would receive, right? So that's part of the landscape. And then to that, you know, one of the primary functions we already provide is collecting the property taxes and then sending them back out the door and the majority of it going to our special districts. So hopefully, part of the education campaign will also include the sort of mutual benefit of the special districts that receive the service of Lane County in the form of appraisal assessment, tax collection, could really strengthen that partnership and understand how much opportunity. We have a system, we have a structure, we have a mechanism in place and we're not fully utilizing it. So before or in addition to building whole new systems and structures and layering on processes, fully, maximally using the ones that we already have is something that would be really great to prioritize, in my opinion. And maybe with the help of our assessor and the Policy Lab doing some of that analysis and being able to show to the districts without adding any new processes and systems, but just maximizing the work of the assessor's office, what that would yield right off the bat would be great. Thank you.
Oh, just one thing I wanted to add regarding mergers. We have 19 sanitation districts and what is it, 88 water districts. And merging sanitation and water, I don't know if that's happened yet, but that seems like a logical step if they overlap, you know, close to, with the close to the same borders. I don't know, that seems to be one of the first things they should consider, is consolidating boards and consolidating resources. And regarding CDBGs, we've got to remember who started CDBGs. Anybody know? Gerald Ford.
Fifty, who's 50 years, was that 50 years ago?
Forty. It was 50, you know? And it was boosted by Ronald Reagan and it's been decimated today.
One more question, which is, you know, the liability factor of taking on a district that is failing and how we would have to manage that because I can understand we might want to have the administrative aspect incorporated in a potential county-wide district, but taking on the liability of an entire system, infrastructure system that's failing is a decent chunk of money and that might need to be accounted for differently in whatever arrangement we make because that could be 20, 40, 60 million dollars worth of infrastructure that goes on our books and I don't think that would be necessarily be a wise decision. So I'm just hoping that that can be reviewed in addition to the rest of the potential Policy Lab discussion.
You know, along that line, we maybe already have something in place, maybe the COG is a place to some, a place to look at.
It is, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, anything else?
Well, before you take off, Jason, I just, part of the reason you get so excited about this Policy Lab is that's where H P 3910 really started from, was Mason. And you probably heard me talk about it when they were back up there. And then that was the very first bill that Vanessa got put through. So talked to her about it. She's, she's happy and hooked on that stuff. So just give everybody a thanks for all the hard work that went into that. And it is paving some ground. And Courtney Fathers back there, she's in every meeting that I'm in, plus every meeting that she's in that I'm not in. So you're all very appreciated. Just want to say thanks.
Chair, Vice Chair, thank you for the acknowledgement. And I concur, Regional Solutions is amazing resource. And I think the Governor's Office for standing that up. And I think we have the best Regional Solutions Coordinator in the state. And very thankful for the work assisting our unincorporated special district communities and our cities working through their infrastructure issues and the coordination that she provides. It's very valuable. And thank you again, Vice, Vice Chair Sonago, for your assistance in the House bill, 3910's adoption. Your testimony was very important.
Cool.
All right. Well, good work. Thanks for the presentation again. Thanks for all the questions. This is a little bit out of my league. I'm thinking more municipal kinds of things. And folks that dealt with rural stuff is different than what I do. Obviously, we're dealing with our municipal Springfield Utility Board on three very aging water systems that are about ready to blow. So everybody's got that issue. Things have been in the ground a long time. And maybe we should have planned better, I guess is the word. Maybe that's out there or something. So, okay, if there's any more questions or anything for the board? Anything for us? Mr. Harris, Mr. Early, Rob, thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate you very much for all your hard work. And hopefully we'll get back with the magic bullet.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Where are you going? You want to back y'all?
Keep that on your mind. Our next item is the Emergency Management crew, but it looks like they're not here yet. So.
Let's take a pause, agree?
We could take a 10 minute break. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Then let's recess for 10 minutes. We'll reconvene back here at 10 o'clock sharp. We'll recess. Good morning. We're back from recess on our regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. It's still Wednesday, July 9th. Our 12th item is Emergency Management Work Session for the Wildfire Season Briefing with our own Tiffany Brown, our Emergency Manager Coordinator extraordinaire. Thank you. Welcome. And take it away whenever you're ready.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. I'm happy to be here today to talk to you about the wildfire season. And we're going to cover a couple topics in this. We'll start with just talking about the 2025 wildfire season and then go into sort of an elected official's overview. This, this presentation has sort of waxed and waned as other priorities take place. And so both sections, I'm going to give you an overview and then kind of end with some ideas about what we could follow up with or where we could do a deeper dive down the road. So let's get started. These are the outlook, the weather outlook slides, both for temperature and precipitation moving forward for the next three months, July, August, and September. And you'll see, yes, we're leaning above normal temperatures, but not the, not the most extreme that it could be on that scale. Similarly, on the precipitation side, we're leaning below. But again, not as severe as, as it could be. So I start with this slide. These slides are both the July forecast, but the one on the left is from May and the one on the right is from July. And so in May, the left-hand image represents what they were predicting the wildfire season to look like. So I just show it to you to help you understand how the conditions have changed even since May. And this is largely due to rainfall and our, our drought conditions, or rather, which weren't. And things dried up considerably between April and June. Okay, so let's get into the four month forecast. October is now considered fire season solidly in terms of forecast. I stacked September and August. We already looked at July because they're identical and bleakly identical. The entire state of Oregon is in above normal conditions for fire outlook. Moving in into October, we get some relief at the margins to the east and west. But as you can see through that cascade range, we're still in an above normal situation. What are we doing now? You probably have heard by now backyard burning and fire season were declared last month. We're in the process as emergency management and everyone really is just coordinating with local partners. Red Cross is in the process of doing their shelter wide inventory. We spent yesterday afternoon at the McKenzie with 26 potential new Red Cross volunteers, talking about setting up two new shelter locations in Lane County. And so that is that's growing outreach and preparedness, just events, opportunities to get information out with Devon, and then E O C readiness. We've had a couple of small events. You'll see at the bottom of the slide here, I know you're well aware of, gave us a chance to kind of try on our new evacuation software. We have some new evacuation software that talks directly to our alerting system. And we'll get into the weeds on, on how it works, but it's going to cut about 20 minutes of time from the time we've established what the evacuation area is and the time we're able to send the alert out, because the two systems talk to one another. And the evacuation zones are pre-identified within the, in the system. We also have the ability to edit those shapes. So no longer do we need to get somebody out of bed or over to the E O C from G I S to create the shape, to create the product, to go on the website. It all happens simultaneously and automatically within those two software systems, which are Genesis evacuation software and Everridge, which powers our lane alerts. It's a really, it's a really exciting development. Both of these events had a software, you know, you're, you're always going to have bugs to work out. And so both of these events, particularly the Mapleton event, gave us real practice with the shapes and how the systems talk to one another. G I S still came to the table and we all kind of got our head around how it works. So this is a, this is a really important development in terms of timeliness.
But did I clearly hear you say that there was typically a 20-minute delay in getting that word out?
I would, I wouldn't.
Was that what I heard?
Yeah. Poor wording choice on my part to refer to it to it as a delay. It has just been the reality of, of how we get the evacuation notice out. I would dare say we're faster about it than a lot of other counties that don't have the G I S capabilities and the people that we can spin up. But the reality is, we still had to call someone, give them the information, the parameters of the evacuation zone, ask them to create a shape, validate that shape, get it to dispatch, get the notification out. Now, we, we, we have the fire chiefs and the sheriff's office. Everyone's been going through the training for this software. And so, you know, it'll be a little clunky at first, like that's just the reality of it. But now we go into that Genesis system and we go, there are the shapes. So one that works for us? Or do we need to modify one? Oh, great. Dispatchers can do that. So all of those steps leading up to arriving at that proper shape have been vastly made more efficient.
Great. Commissioner Trigger's got a question too.
Thank you. And this may be coming later. Once you have that identified and you dispatch and the information goes out to the public, what are our mechanisms for translating that information into other languages? Which ones? And how do we communicate it to the deaf blind community in particular, for evacuation specifically?
So I'll circle back because I'm not going to have a complete answer for you on this. One of the things that we have when you register for the system now is that you can self-identify as being hearing impaired or having site vulnerabilities. And so we have the ability, how well that's used, how, how many people are registered, I don't know, but it ends up being one resource that we have in terms of our vulnerable populations. The system itself has a translate button that translates into 10. Now, our staff. Now, our staff, who are paid professionally to translate, will tell you, oh, that's Google Translate. You don't want to use that. I would say you don't want to use it if possible, right? If we have something to use, these are pretty clear-cut messages that, you know, direct protective action. And so in the incident that we had in March with the flood, there was a neighborhood in Eugene, and they had been displaced. And the question came up about translation. And so what I'll tell you, and I'll follow up with the conclusion, is that we've already had two meetings with Public Health and Latife to talk about not just finding translators and developing that bench, or we have the bench, identifying who they are, but literally creating a position within the emergency management. So that's, we have, you know, a lot of talk about positions and pay and all of the things. And I think we started to go down this Blue Sky Day position conversation, and then it was like, wait a minute. Let's just create a position within our organization and have a bench of people that are willing. And we already have people that are willing to do that. Spanish, Chinese, not yet. But I'd say we've got Google Translate to fall back on in the meantime.
Great. Thank you.
I would just end it by saying I don't disagree with the language experts in our organization who say that's not ideal. I also haven't heard a lot of uproar externally about it working poorly.
Commissioner Firth's got a question too, real quick.
This is very quick. First, an overview. In the days long before patients, and just shortly after Steve Morgenheimsky came here, we didn't have any emergency response. I mean, it's what do we do now? So what we're seeing today is miraculous. It really is. And I'm looking directly in your eyes and I say, you're performing miracles. We had our first meeting. Steve Dingell brought us all together just so that commissioners knew how to get a hold of each other in case there was an emergency. We didn't even have that level. So we're very sophisticated now. But the point I want to make is that in the case of an event, a large event that spans the lighthouse to the volcanoes, the importance of the single-county-wide agency, the Sheriff's Department. Let's focus on that. We're vastly under-resourced there. We can't even do patrol and 911 response. And we do rely on the sheriff immensely, both by design and by default, to cover us in emergencies. So I don't need an answer to that at this point in time, but just to understand that as we look to funding the Sheriff's Department, we're not just funding patrol, we're not just funding corrections, we're funding this all-important function of the Sheriff's Department. Thanks.
Absolutely. And I think it's because you've had so much practice and everyone's worked so well together and that we are able to do so much and do so well with the few people that we have.
And they've, for many, many years, always since before Ritzberger, they've done more with less in the Sheriff's Department. They're accustomed to outside belt and lean. But imagine what they could do with more resource.
Thank you. So evacuation notification. And then the duty officer program, what we're calling just sort of an umbrella of a number of things that we brought out this year. Yes, there's a duty officer program, a schedule, sort of a standardized what-happens-first process tree for whoever's on duty, and then sharing the wealth with staff and other folks in terms of that. The more public-facing piece is the Weekly Wildfire Watch. You're receiving that email. It's still a little sparse. That's a good thing. Not much has happened. And that's, you know, I learned last summer, we were on the ready and just having those cooperator calls, even when they boiled down to a couple of times a week when something did spring up, I really felt like we were more nimble. People had more muscle to be at the table. And they realized, you know, oh, it's not 45 minutes. It's not this commitment. It's just show up, hear the information at the same time. And so that's the intention of the Wildfire Watch. I'll let you know that I've had suggestions for improvement, which I always ask for, but they're, oh, here's this attachment in here. It's not a newsletter. It's just the facts. I wanted it to look just like anything else you would receive from county emergency management during an event. So not a lot of fluff, really, just the weather, what the local agencies are doing, and then anything regionally or statewide that's happening that stands to impact us. And there may be other things as we come along, but I want you to just know that's the spirit of that communication. And then similarly, every Friday, I send out an email to the Lane County Directors, the primary folks that show up during an emergency, that are the policy group that oversee decisions and work closely with the county administrator. Pre-positioning resources. This is largely our fire service, but I heard about some new air assets that we have now in Cresswell that we didn't last year. And I think this is, I didn't try to get too into the weeds. This isn't my wheelhouse. But this might be another opportunity to wind up somebody up. And then again, yearly events, the Rice Road Fire in Mapleton, which got to not more than five acres, but was really extended. You know, that Level 1 evacuation was in place for a few days by design, you know. And I actually got a call from watch duty. You know, they called people and they said, hey, you're Level 1. We're going to have a meeting with them, search and rescue, and GIS, and kind of understand more about how that all comes together and shows up.
Tiffany, we got one more question.
Really quick question. Where or how does smoke inundation figure in? So there might be people in a community where the fire isn't on their landscape or necessarily threatening, but there's unhealthy air due to smoke inundation, depending on the wind. Is that part of, would that be part of your?
It will be part of the weather piece once we get started, absolutely. And probably, you know, it's probably warrants breaking out a section for Public Health and just having it be the weather. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay. So here are the future opportunities. Fire season briefing again. Maybe when it's over, maybe something happens in the meantime that we need to talk about again. I didn't plan for this community wildfire protection plan to ever be part of this presentation, so you know. Only to say that it's going on. It's really relevant. Eugene and Springfield are doing theirs at the same time. And I don't think it's my imagination that people come to the planning table in greater earnest during wildfire season when they're talking about wildfire planning. Lane County unprotected lands is a topic that has popped up recently. That is property throughout Lane County that is not part of any specific fire district, which makes it the responsibility of the county. This is a topic all its own and something we could come back to talk about. As I looked through old records and presentations that patients would make, I saw that ODF would come to the table periodically to talk about their readiness and their weather outlook, some of the same things I've talked about. But this unprotected lands topic looked like it would come back routinely. So maybe it's time again. It doesn't look like it's come up for a couple of years. The Mass Care Resource Assessment and Development, as you know, this is tied closely to wildfire season. All hazards but wildfire season. And we have a lot of, there's a lot of movement in this area right now. Against the backdrop of FEMA disappointing a lot of people these days, we got word a couple of weeks ago that we have received a $160,000 grant to perform what I'm calling a countywide mass care assessment that starts to answer the questions of, who are we talking about when we say we're taking care of people? Where are they? What do they need? What are their challenges? Why do we care? These are things that have popped up during wildfire season. As you know, it was one of my key takeaways during the ice storm after action. And my finding was, yes, we have some gaps, but that it was even difficult to have a conversation about it based on the assumptions that people have about it. Language matters. You say the word respite to five people and it means five different things. And so the mass care assessment is designed as a strategic tool to bring everyone with a responsibility around mass care to the table, to help them understand their responsibility about mass care, and then provide them with the opportunity to sort of unpack these questions, you know. Who do you need to take care of? What resources do you have? What resources do you need? And to approach this project in a comprehensive fashion, which is to say, we understand how every person living in Lane County is accounted for under the umbrella of mass care. So we have a kickoff meeting with FEMA in two weeks to talk about this project. And so the other exciting things are happening. We have a new regional director in Red Cross, and she's on fire, and she owns a house here, so she's probably going to stay. Continuity is an important feature of Red Cross. And we put together a two-day shelter training on the Upper McKenzie in 10 days, and 26 people showed up yesterday. So the conversation is ripe right now, and there are a lot of people excited about it. And the Resilience Hub grant, which, you know, looks like it's not going to come to fruition, actually ended up having an indirect benefit. And that is the number of communities we had contacted us when they heard about it to say, can we be one? But they're still excited about providing that kind of service in their community. I think resilience hub is the new term. I think we won't even be calling them shelters in another five years. And so starting to promote that idea of, Red Cross and the county isn't here to give you a shelter. We're here to provide you with the resources and the subject matter expertise to help yourselves in a bad day. Not because we don't want to help, but because we understand that helping yourselves on that very bad day is actually the most effective way to take care of our community. So that's exciting work, and we have something we could come back and talk about. Preparedness Month is in September. It's not too soon to be thinking about it. We are. I showed you the help okay signs last time we met. You asked me about the rollout, and we're working on that right now.
We need some. We need some okay signs.
Okay, I'll give you a stack. We're actually, we just put in the print order for the translated versions, which aren't, they just have, they have Spanish and Chinese in the corner, and then of course the directions, but I'll get some over. Okay, so now we're into the second part of the presentation, the role of elected officials. I scaled this down. I went through the four phases in the full slide deck. I, you know, I'll remind you, everything I do is in the scope of preparedness, response, recovery, or mitigation. And so today, we're just going to talk about response because wildfire season is primarily that. And there's the other side. I never do this on purpose. Oops, okay. And so really, what are we talking about during, what incident? What pieces of this are we talking about that really involve emergency management? Our previous sheriff, I think, said it the best to me. And he said, you're really the downstream effects. You're helping us with the downstream effects of what it is we're facing. And these are, there are more, but these are really the usual suspects. And so over on the right there is sort of the three main talking points about your role as elected officials. Get informed quickly and stay in touch. We've had some practice doing that too, right? We've done it a couple of different ways. Adam starts a conversation or a loop. You reached out to me directly. And those are the things we learned in those two fires. I had some wrong numbers. Everybody was calling me patients. Sounds like they had some wrong numbers. I thought it was Tim Wallace, but it wasn't, you know. So it's just all of those things, and we ironed those out. To trust and empower your officials. How do you do that? Well, understanding what they do. Inviting me here today to understand what it is that you can do to, you know, what it is that we're doing that needs support or empowerment. But ditto Public Works and all of the other folks that get involved. And then to communicate quickly, clearly, and effectively to the whole community. Really, in a leadership role in this sphere, it is information in and information out. And I can't say this enough times. I'll try to say it a few more during this presentation. What you say matters. Your voice matters. And so whether it's communicating something that somebody doesn't know that's factual, or whether it's encouraging someone to do, this was the preparedness section, whether it's encouraging someone to do something, whether it's telling, you know, transparency and telling people what you're working on, this is really an important piece.
Okay, we have one more question from Commissioner.
I'm just going to add something, and this is more for my peers around the table. What I have found really important when there is an actual emergency happening is, if you use social media, is I refer people and I tag the county pages that they can go to for updated information, the sheriff's office, Health and Human Services, depending on what the nature of the emergency, because those are going to get updated in real time. I'm not going to go in and update everything all the time. So that's the way to be the trusted voice, is to tell people, here's the right place to get information about county emergency response, rather than me trying to stay on top of and follow in the comments and correct people's information about evacuation levels, is to just be the voice that vets that these are the right sources to follow for the best up-to-date information.
And it's so simple, yet so effective. Devon sets up that page at the beginning of the season, and it doesn't change. You just know that that's where people need to go. And ditto the sheriff's office, you know, sites, so.
And in the event that one of us is directly impacted, our property, ourselves, we're not going to be hopping on social media to update the information, but Central Ops.
Absolutely. That's a great point. I think, you know, even when I'm making presentations, I try, all, any information in the slide, I try to link to a resource and point people in that direction. It's great guidance. So what are our key considerations? Well, they're your key considerations. I hear you talk about these things often. Equity, individuals with disabilities, access and functional needs, our private sector organizations, non-governmental and community organizations, the nonprofits, and then the individual preparedness of our communities. And so whole community partners. We call them cooperators. These are examples of them. No, they aren't. Community cooperators is one of them. These are really just the folks that we deal with, and you know this, our state and federal partners, our community cooperators, which includes everyone that isn't the general public. That's really what it's become. We've got them grouped in terms of discipline, and I want you to know, because my boss the other day said, everyone? Sort of this look on his face. And John and I had been feeling the same way. And so we've grouped it into a key, the key group, all the agencies with a bench of two, and that's our core cooperator. And when somebody drops off it, they're replaced with a vacant so that we know. And then everyone else is sort of over there. But that list is up to over 220 people now. And that's with some people dropping off every time and coming on every time. And so it's not that we have that many people. I think people are developing their own bench for showing up at that meeting, which is a good sign.
Mr. Morgenheimsky, do you have a question?
Yeah, I think you answered. I just wanted to give Commissioners an idea. You said 200. How many are on the list?
About 228 now, I think.
Yeah. And so when you do cooperator calls, that's how many people get invited. You could have anywhere from 100 or.
Absolutely. Yep. And they get, every time they get forwarded, it's part of our cleanup. They get forwarded, people ask to join, people ask to get removed, and so, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner's got a comment too.
We talked about this before during our cooperator calls, during those, when the EOC set up. Do we ever get them a template of pertinent information that we like to hear so everybody's kind of saying the same thing?
Not a template, but we have notes in the agenda, you know, about how we sculpt the agenda. And it's definitely worked, but I think it's as simple as, well, and people do what they want, don't they? But you can preface it by saying, you know, here's what, like, the verbal version of a situation report. You know, we send a, we don't just say, here's a blank piece of paper. Tell us what's going on. We send, we hand somebody a form and we ask them. So similarly, we can say, here's what we want to hear from you.
Yeah.
Okay, a little bit about legal authorities. And you can take these with a grain of salt. I don't know. Who knows what the legal authorities are going to be in another year? But as it stands, we rely on the Stafford Act, which was established in 1988. And that's what you know of as the disaster declaration process. County declares, state declares, thresholds, presidential declaration, opens pots of money, public assistance for government essential facilities, individual assistance, there are others. And that's where that all started. In 2000, the Hazard Mitigation, Disaster Mitigation Act, this is our National Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is, our community wildfire protection plan will be under the umbrella of our NHMP. That is the plan that does not excite you necessarily, but that is attached to those big federal dollars that we see through the BRIC grant, the Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities, and others. And so that NHMP has become the gold standard for communities identifying their hazards, their vulnerability. their vulnerabilities, and most importantly, identifying action items and projects that have been identified by the whole community, often shovel-ready. And by being featured in this plan, they're teed up for greater success in the application process. Presidential Policy Directive 8, National Preparedness Goal and Core Capabilities. Everything we do in emergency management around maintaining readiness revolves around 32 core capabilities. Everything in emergency management, it's everything from operational communication to forensics and attribution, transportation, communication, all of the things we do. And so, that's how we measure where we're at, what we need, where our gaps are. And then, the other piece is the National Preparedness Goal, which is how we prepare ourselves and how we work to prepare the community. The Sandy Recovery Improvement Act changes to disaster assistance for survivors and the Disaster Recovery Reform Act. So, again, these are things that are a little up in the air, but I think we continue to operate in this fashion. It's what we have. Our systems work for us. And then, State ORS 401 is the primary authority in the state of Oregon for emergency management. And then, we talk about city and county code. And I purposely didn't put a lot here. I don't think that there, I didn't know if we were going to talk about the life, but that is certainly part of it. We have the new fund and I don't, I didn't know if we'd made that, if that was part of our code or.
It's not part of the code.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I wanted to mention it as a way that we rely on these authorities and in communities that have emergency management part of its code, it's often just amplified language or from the state or federal. But I just want to speak to some of the things that we do in terms of leaning into the emergency and the fund is one of the things. Yes, it's a dollar amount that we can access and that we developed based on feedback we got from not just our own organization, but all organizations, that responders don't like sitting waiting to hear who's paying for something. So, that's a great thing, but I think it's, even the discussions around it have been so fruitful in terms of how we think about it and how we perform due diligence and develop a process for that money.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, I'll just add to what Tiffany is saying, the life fund, help me, life stands for Local Incident Fund for Emergencies. So, that's what life stands for.
I was laughing because I say life fund and then I'm like, I think the F means fund.
Yeah, we established this in last year's budget and funded it in, sort of in the aftermath of the ice storm from two years ago.
Yes.
When we found ourselves in the middle of an incident and didn't have necessarily resources. And there were a lot of questions just about how are we going to, you know, pay for certain things? Should we be paying for certain things? And then, you asked about the code. We have developed actually a set of guidelines for how to go about if, within an emergency, how folks can, within Lain County, can request use of those resources and who actually has the authority. It goes to the incident commander and then the policy team that we have that gets established during an emergency. So, anyways, we have sort of guidelines for how to utilize those funds.
As I recall, that helps us internally be more nimble and, I mean, it's, when we stand up the EOC, we have people who are on payroll doing functions outside of their day-to-day and we need a fund that can offset until the cycle catches up with coding those hours or those supplies, right?
Not necessarily.
That's a separate part of it. So, this isn't the code we're referring to here, but last year when I got here, patients had directed my staff to start something called a Disaster Cost Recovery Plan, which is basically in response to feeling like we've left money on the table in the past for, and kind of figuring out why and where and how we can prevent that moving forward. And so, one of the pieces is that is, it's related to this, but it's in those early, it's not, it's in the early stages and how it comes out at the end. How are people coding their staff time, their materials and supplies? And it relates to this because it's like, well, should we code them like we would normally? And then, we have to do a journal entry afterwards. What we also realized is that this department had this code and this department had this code and this department was just putting it in their ordinary account codes and then journaling it later. And so, we're in the process of working through, well, we've already done it. We established also that the payroll system and the general ledger are separate systems, right? And so, the coding system are different. And so, we've gotten as far as creating two codes for the current system that are identical in payroll and in human resources, I mean, in human resources and in the general ledger. And so, the real value is in the training and developing, you know, a new expectation of people doing it that way. But that is one of the ways that we've streamlined and one of the strategies for disaster cost recovery, because I think, you know, there are just pieces you miss after the fact.
And I just, we're talking about two different things. One is how we track our internal costs and where people charge their time to, that's an internal piece. The life fund could be used for internal costs. An example would be, there was a conversation during the ice storm, the need for shelter and particularly in Springfield. And there was this discussion in the moment of like, well, if we have county staff and it's over the weekend, like, we have to pay our staff. We can ask people to volunteer, but if we're requiring people to go, we have to pay them. How are we going to pay for that cost? We didn't want costs like that to be a barrier to solving the problem. And so, it could be that this life fund could pay for those types of unanticipated additional staff costs, or it could be a contract with another entity for service or a piece of equipment. But it's sort of, in the moment, before we have the authorization or the identified funds, that these are sort of quick resources that we can use for immediate, like, in the first few hours and days of an incident to pay for those costs.
Particularly in those operational departments like Public Works and Public Health, where there's often less flexibility, you know, in terms of how the money is spent and the budget is set up. So, our emergency priorities are well-established and they're not unusual across the board in terms of how other folks prioritize. Saving lives, number one. Response operations that prevent loss of life and minimize risks to public health and safety. Preserving property, property is the second. Efforts to reduce impacts to critical infrastructure and minimize property damage. Third is environment, actions that minimize long-term impacts to the environment. Fourth is to preserve government, continuity, actions that preserve order and policymaking abilities. And then, fifth, restore essential services, operations focused on returning access to vital resources to the community. I guess that's continuity. And so, these are, do other priorities creep up? Possibly. They usually fall into one of these five buckets. And so, when we're talking about the mission of emergency management, the mission of the board in terms of supporting emergency management, decision-making, how we prioritize, if there's any question, really falling back on these five priorities. And so, key county resources for managing disasters. The thing we're not talking about here today in any great detail is something you see over on the right-hand side there, which is the National Incident Management System. lest you think we're making it up as we go along. The 32 core capabilities are just one part of an entire suite of a system that we rely on in emergency management. And you signed a board order to say that we would use it. And so, it is integral to our operations and we're not going to talk about it in great detail today, but I'm going to talk about this piece of it because it's so relevant to what the topic is today. The Emergency Operations Plan, it is the guiding document for activating our EOC and the response phase of what we do. It outlines the roles and responsibilities of the Emergency Operations Center. I'm going to go through this quickly because we updated this last year and I talked about a lot of this in greater detail last June. Operational coordination and communication are among the most important things that we do. And in fact, you see, you'll look through the history and see incidents where communication is all we were doing. We have a cooperators call, we've activated the EOC, we may be coordinating some resources, but our primary function, maybe the most important reason we're there, is that information in, information out, that we provide to the community as the hub of that emergency management function. Identifying emergencies, it identifies emergency types, outlines our policy and procedures. And then, the real gold in this plan, in my mind, are the pieces that we're working on right now that really relate directly to the Emergency Operations Center are the emergency support functions. These are 18, transportation, communication, public health, mask care, and they really encompass all of our functional areas. Again, they're not very operational, but they outline assumptions, who does what. And so, we're, you know that we're required to bring just the basic plan to you every two years. We've set up a new calendar. We have 18 emergency support functions where we'll be updating nine a year, so that when we bring the EOP to you next year, so too will we have updated all of the emergency support functions. Also, our supporting an incident annexes. This is where we get into what we do. There is a supporting annex for activating the Emergency Operations Center, you know, everything from turning the lights on to who talks to who, to, you know, what we're doing there. And there's one for sheltering animals. So, when I, we say EOP and people say, oh, that's where all the things that we do. And it is where we talk about them. But because we don't always do them ourselves, we don't necessarily get into the weeds, right? When we do get into the weeds, it comes in the form of an incident annex. The next is the Emergency Operations Center, EOC, out at the Delta Campus. I just had somebody ask me next, last night at a presentation where the alternate site was, it's here, in PSB. And then, the Incident Command System. That is the organizational system that we use to organize ourselves. It's how we decide who we need, who, how we need to staff the emergency. And then, these next four bullets are really our primary functions as the Emergency Operations Center. We field resource requests from our community partners to either fill them ourselves or pass them up to the state. We develop situational awareness about what's going on so that we can engage in advanced planning. I think we're so often confused with emergency response and I think the chief thing that sets us apart is that we're imagining what could happen next, right? While our, while our response partners are dealing with, right, what's in front of them, we're like, and what could happen next? What should we be planning for? And so, developing situational awareness and a common operating picture is critical to being able to perform that function of what might we need in six hours, 12 hours, or 24 hours. And then, record-keeping and getting better at that, that's also part of the Disaster Cost Recovery Plan. We have a lot of tools at our disposal with ICS and NIMs. The problem with everything that's provided us to the federal government is it's all of this. And so, it's a matter of deciding what we need and what works best for us that aligns with the spirit of what the federal government has asked us to do because it makes good sense, but in a scalable way that makes sense for our community. What could possibly happen? And what I mean by this is what could possibly happen that would necessitate the board to need to convene and have a conversation? Extraordinary things. You know, a lot, a lot happens even in some of these fires that we've had in recent years where your role could be best described as sort of information in, information out, and maintaining situational awareness. This is a list of things where we start to get into the weeds about the board convening and using their authorities in ways that benefit the community. And it's an extraordinary requirement for emergency resources. You've seen this. This was the Holiday Farm Fire, this is, these are the, this was the ice storm, these are the big events that we have. Large numbers of casualties. Fortunately, we haven't seen that necessarily, but that's some of the same problems and on a whole new set involving state and public health partners. Extensive damage or disruption to critical infrastructure and key resources, new acronym, C I K R, it's an old one, but that's what it refers to, are critical and essential facilities. We're working on a project right now and somebody said, what does that mean? And what it means when I say essential facilities is very specifically the list of types of facilities that are part of the state of Oregon Building Code, type 4 occupancy, fire stations, hospitals, shelters that hold more than 500 people. There are a lot in three, I think that the type three, but this is what we're talking about. A significant unexpected dislocation of residents who have to leave their own homes, mask care, or visitors to the area, earthquakes, tsunami, something on the coast, or a big event where we've got a lot of people here that are unable to leave. We have challenges around mask care on a good day with an ordinary event. So, when we start thinking on a bigger scale, it really pushes the conversation into a place where we realize how many gaps that we have. A sudden and substantial degradation of the regional environment, things are bad everywhere. And so, so what I mean by that is, yes, maybe what has happened here isn't the worst thing that could have happened to us, but it's happened to everyone else as well. So, whatever resources we may rely on may be taxed by others that are affected by this thing. Destabilization of regional economies and then instability of one or more local governments any time, but particularly in the face of a disaster. So, the organizational structure of an emergency, this is just kind of a basic building block and it's how we think of emergencies. Responders, the people that help the people, general staff, and when I talk about that, that's the Emergency Operations Center. That's our general staff and the EOC, people who help the people who help the people. And then, the command staff, those people are also part of the Emergency Operations Center, but they are our command staff and the folks that oversee the operations and then interface with the policy group to inform them, to seek guidance from them. The life fund is one of those. One of the things we're working out is when Steve takes guidance from the policy group, when he seeks guidance from the policy group, or when he says, yes, go, we need to do that. And then, would you just talk a little bit about what happens above that in terms of policy group and then there's Steve and then there's you? And do you have anything to say about that?
Well, I'd say above the policy group is the Board of Commissioners, right? So, the board is ultimately the policy entity that's making determinations about whether or not an emergency is declared, allocation of significant amount of resources. I'm trying to think of another sort of big decision that the board would need to make. So, the board is the ultimate policy that, in the structure of ICS, the policy group tends to be a more nimble group that's going to meet on a regular basis to sort of make decisions around and really directing, the policy group is really directing, as I see it, the incident commander, which is the top, if you go back, can you go back to your slide?
Yeah.
The command staff, the incident commander is the person who's leading the command staff, the EOC, right? Who oftentimes serves as an incident commander. I know sometimes early on, the emergency manager will serve as an incident commander.
Until a lieutenant shows up.
Right. Oftentimes, it's the sheriff's office or a fire chief or someone ultimately who will take on the incident commander role. The incident commander then will seek direction from a policy group. And usually, that policy group includes the county administrator, the sheriff, or other law enforcement or fire agencies and other departments that are actively involved in an incident.
Yeah.
And then, that group is seeking ultimate direction from the Board of Commissioners, right? So, if we need, hey, listen, this incident is going to exceed the county administrator's authority for allocation of resources, we need to go to the board, we need to declare an emergency, we need significant, you know, so then, we ultimately go to, so hopefully that.
Yeah, so, who's familiar with the incident command system or has seen a chart or is, OK, it's scalable, it's flexible, it's also modular. So, so think of two separate incident command systems. One's you, one's with you at the top is the policy group, Steve Moakes, the incident commander of the operations that are below him, which include the Emergency Operations Center, which starts another modular incident commander, Lieutenant Wells, with the policy group, Lain County Directors of the operations that are going on. And so, it's a separate, it's, we make these decisions, concentric circles, and then, oh, let's push that one. let's, let's push that one up. Steve talks about it with the policy group, oh, let's push that up, and then it becomes a board decision. And some, as you know, some decisions are inherent to the board.
And in emergencies, from what I've seen, which has been a handful in my time here, it is at that very high level of basically easing some of the, what makes sense as day-to-day limitations so that those next, the leaders of those two modules have the flexibility they need. It's not convening us every couple of days, say, what about this, what about that? It's, can you give more authority so the people who are doing work can do more of it more quickly? And so, it's that, it's the highest level of policy, much higher than what we do week in, week out at our board meetings, for example.
And so, and so here are the general roles and responsibilities. I know we're getting short on time, so I'll run through them. This just sort of outlines the needs of, of an emergency, but these are the things that you're chiefly involved in, declaring the emergency. Why do we declare the emergency? It allows us to make decisions in a different way, and it's what, it's what you're talking about in terms of authorizing implementation of the local emergency plans, which create, not, not new authorities, but allow us to act more nimbly, in a more timely fashion, relying on mutual aid, cooperative agreements, emergency agreements, initiating requests. These are things that we can do when we don't have a declared emergency, but OEM might say, and what do you, it really is, once the declaration occurs, that all of these things just start happening, happening really fluidly. Providing specific legal protection for actions initiated, procurement rules, for example, shift to, in our favor, to be able to do things quickly, and then setting the stage for requesting state and federal assistance. And then finally, delegation of authority, which is something I haven't seen happen very many times, but it is when a jurisdiction is no, is no longer able to manage the situation, and it requires a delegation of authority. For example, a city that's, city hall has been damaged and they're not able to stand up their operations, they might bring in a delegation of authority. Did we do that during one of our events with having somebody spell the Emergency Operations Center?
Prior to, we had Holiday Farm Fire, definitely. I'm trying to think, was it fire after Holiday Farm Fire where, yeah, it exceeded our ability? And so, then I would get the county administrator to go and actually delegate the authority to another agency, typically a fire agency, to say, you're now in charge of this event.
And I think that did happen with the City of Springfield and the Oregon Department of Forestry Incident Management team. I think it ended up with us all being co-located, but I think it started with the delegation of authority.
For what incident?
The ice storm.
Oh, it did for the, okay.
Okay. I'll go, here are just a few slides that talk specifically about the roles, the chair role to convene the board for emergency sessions, assistant communication coordination efforts with elected officials of other governmental entities, so really just talking to your people in, in other organizations, and maintaining an active role in supporting community recovery efforts. Again, voice matters. The general board role, ensure the line of succession. If the chair isn't available, if the commissioners are impacted, what does that look like? Be available to address the public and act as a communication conduit to support respective communities. Review emergency expenditures, I don't think that happens terribly often, but when we get into that, that piece, that modular piece where it's you having the conversation. Coordinating public information with the county manager and the PIO. And, you know, this happens mostly without you, but back to what you say matters, this is Devin, Devin's really good at bringing us in and teeing us up when it, when it matters most and is effective.
And I'll just say, you know, this is like preaching to the choir, but the public wants to hear from their elected officials, right? So it's one thing to have a PIO and an incident commander and these folks that are in the EOC that have a lot of the technical, operational knowledge and expertise. The community members want to hear from their elected officials, and that's who they trust, right? And so, we really do rely, so the information flow and making sure commissioners have good factual information so you can communicate in a timely manner with folks. You're also oftentimes the first line of communication. I think that was the case in the, in this flooding event that happened with the last flooding event. You know, there was, there was social media, and we've sort of, we're starting to hear about things bubbling up from elected officials, so making sure. I want to just also touch on the succession plan of, you know, it's the chair, if the chair is not available, it's the vice chair. If the vice chair is not available, we go to the most senior commissioner. So like, if that can happen because of the, let's say, the chair is personally affected because of their property, vice chair is out of town, we go to the most senior commissioner. But we do need a quorum. And so, that's, and I also want to say, we always include county, county councils involved in the policy group and all of these sort of formations of the board and dealing with those things.
Is there a plan for an absence of a quorum? In case like three of the commissioners are directly affected by a disaster, and that's rare, obviously.
We only had two commissioners, what would we do? I don't, I'm.
There's no authority there. There's no legal authority. So unless you provide for that in advance and delegate that authority.
Yeah.
In the plan, and I don't know if that's the case.
We should contemplate that. I feel like we did have that conversation back during, around the Holiday Farm Fire period of time, so I think we should talk about that.
Okay.
As a, you know, the big one, right?
Well, right, because communication systems, like we might all be around but not be able to convene as a quorum because of communication systems, so.
Ice storm was great.
In 2014, Tom Turner called me about two o'clock in the morning and said, can we open Alma for fire services? And I said, well, yeah. I didn't have that authority.
Well, but who's going to complain? I mean.
That's a practical. I got covered on it, but I think having that in place is essential.
Yeah.
And should all five be gone, what do we do? I mean, a decision has to be made.
Well, then you can provide for that too as well, and it probably looks, not, don't look at me. Look at me. And then, on down from there, I mean, it just, it's just delegation of authority. Yeah.
Well, then, we're looking at you.
Yes. Before that, we're setting that up. I do think that, you know, we brought, sorry, we're going a little bit over time. I asked Tiffany to bring this to, like, typically in the, in the, when you're in the midst of an emergency, these are the things you deal with, and so it's good to plan for them before you get to that place. It's like, okay, what is our, what is everybody's role? And I'm so thankful that in Lane County, historically, and with this board, we've all just have a very pragmatic role, like, okay, what's the role that we need to play? That's not always the case in communities and in organizations. Sometimes you can have different players that don't always play the role, and it causes a lot of confusion and disruption. And so, I think it's just, we wanted to have that conversation, but I think this is probably a takeaway, is like, if we have three or more commissioners, what does delegation look like? Do we end up, does the board ultimately want to establish a delegation to the remaining commissioner, or to the county administrator, or to, if, you know what I mean, a succession sort of thing? If this person is available, then it goes down the chain. It may be something worth contemplating.
It's good to think about.
And it should, just FYI, it should be put in the code because this is a home rule issue.
Yeah.
So it should be in ordinance.
You know, significantly, in 2014, I did get covered. Dingle covered everything and made sure that there weren't any downstream negative effects. But it could be, I could be personally liable.
Yeah.
Or any one of us could be if we made a decision that we're not authorized to make.
Right.
You made that a sport chair, Pat, just to be?
Sport chair.
Yeah, okay, right.
And then, the end meeting is needed to provide policy direction. These are the things Steve was referring to, making ordinances that reduce impact to residents, floodplain ordinances, land use, development codes, price gouging ordinances is the one that I've seen most commonly, especially in communities that have been kind of shut down with a storm and that type of thing. County manager role, a lot of these are duplicative because you work closely together, again, ensure the lines of succession, and really, a lot, a lot of the things that you do arm in arm, but the connective tissue, you know? There's me, and there's you, and there's the county manager in between us, kind of deciding how, how we manage the incident, and then meet as needed to provide policy direction.
And you'll see oftentimes, you know, Tiffany, I'm trying to think what the last, what was the last incident we had, I lose track, you know, where I'll get notified, there's a group of us that will get notified, and then my first thought is typically, who's telling the commissioners? And then I'll, you know, I think in the last one, I did a text group with the commissioners and county council and a couple of other people, including Tiffany, to say, here's where we're at. So there's that, you know, I will try to play that role, or another department head that is filling in at that time, or in charge, or the PIO, so that the emergency manager and the more incident team can focus on the incident, and then we have someone else who's more removed from the incident, but the flow of information to provide that to commissioners so you're up to speed on things. Until we get to a battle rhythm, once you get 24, you know, eight, 12, 24 hours into an incident, a structure is established and it's really clear, and the flow of information becomes, it's the first, you know, six, eight, 12, 24 hours that can be really clunky, and when the flow of communication is really important.
Yeah. And what I'm doing before that happens is that anything that raises any level of interest, I'm texting the two Steves. And just, that's FYI, here's what it is. So in case it becomes bigger, you're not hearing about it for the first time, or in case you hear about it from the board, you've actually got some information to dovetail with that. And then reviewing expenditures, again, I could say more about the life here, and that's where this comes into play. We're winding up here. Disaster preparedness is key. I don't talk about this enough, it seems like EM 101, but really, that we are prepared as leadership, as first responders, yes, preparing the community, but, but in order to be able to respond with intention and with our full faculties, we need to make sure that the people that we love and care about are prepared, that we ourselves are prepared. And then, I'll say it one last time, you telling people to get prepared, you telling people that you are prepared has great value for the work we do and the goals that we have around community resilience. Here are some state resources. Commissioner Beck was asking me about training. There is a formal G402 Senior and Elected Officials Course from FEMA that's good, that we, that you can deliver in anywhere from three to six hours. And then, we've, we've got just general, and this is where we'd get more into the weeds about any of these things. And then there are some state resources that you can find, these are all linked, and you have this presentation. There's an online course, IS908, those are lovely, you just get on when you have an hour, and you go through a presentation, and then just local training and exercise, what opportunity do you have? And I think the, I feel like these are sort of tabletop discussions at times where we get together and talk through these things. And that concludes my presentation.
Packed full of info. Thank you very much, Tiffany. Great, great presentation. Any questions or comments from the board? No, we had a kind of rally, but go ahead. Question, but.
There's a lot. I had a few things I wanted to touch on. Specifically, I was made aware last month of our unprotected lands, and that we had a contract with ODF, a really modest contract, I think it was only $10,000. And this covered, for a large part, mainly covered Mount Pisgah. It has expired, and it's been expired for some time, which raised my level of concern. And so, I notified the county council and Steve Adams as policy director. And this came about just in my regular course of review with my ODF representative for the east side. And although it was a modest coverage, it was coverage, and it also specifically called out the MOUs. So if something happened on Mount Pisgah, and we were called in, we would have ODF as first responding agency to the incident, but if it became a large incident and they needed additional staffing, it would automatically include MOU coverage, which covers expenses from local fire authorities that are surrounding the incident. Right now, it's not covered, and it's not the only unprotected land of the county, and it also begged the question of how many private and commercial areas out there that are not covered by any fire protection agency. Although that's not our jurisdictional responsibility, it's still an issue if something happens on their land and it goes elsewhere, and they're responsible. But my primary concern is how much of Lane County land is unprotected, and do we need to update that contract? Where are we with that particular contract? Because I feel like we somehow dropped the ball in renewing the contract, and that could have been because there was turnover at ODF, there was turnover at Lane County, and that happens. But, so I wanted to bring that up specifically. And the other, the other point I wanted to bring up was, last year when I went to Sonoma, the NACO president is from Sonoma County, right? So, and their fire had occurred just before the Holiday Farm Fire. So he had invited all county elected officials down to see the aftermath of what they'd been able to rebuild in Sonoma County, which was a great trip. It also came to my attention in that trip that there are other states that require formal emergency management training of their elected officials. And so, I actually got the code, Steve Adams was able to send the state code from Texas that outlines exactly what kind of formal training there, that, that is required. We do not have that equivalent in the state of Oregon, although I think it would be a really great idea. It's not necessarily something that I'm advocating for, I think it would be really nice. But it also begged the question for me of what kind of formal training should we be having as commissioners just because we are in a county that has incidents on a regular basis? And there are different levels of roles of formal training. So I reached out to Tiffany and asked, okay, what kind of formal training could we take? Even if it's just like continuing education on our own. There's the 402, which patients delivered to us as a board several years ago, but it may have been a different board makeup at that time. But there are also like basic levels of 100, 200, that kind of thing.
Anybody that touches an emergency should, should take ICS 100, ICS 200, and ICS 700. They're basic, they're a little dry, but they're pretty repetitive. So once you've taken one, if, if you've never heard about it before, you start to get your head around it. ICS 700, I believe, is the National Incident Management System, so it goes over in greater detail what I talked about today, the system under which. ICS 800, and I might be getting seven and eight mixed up, talks about the, the origin of all of this. You don't have to be an emergency manager to know that a lot of this started with 9/11 and the inability to coordinate and communicate effectively, and that's why we were given this system. One and 200 start to get into response operations and incidents and talk about how the Incident Command System and the command staff and the general staff and what the different positions do. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's important for you to understand that deeply, but I think it is a really good overview for anyone that touches a disaster to understand what's happening around them. ICS 100, 200, 700, and 800. Beyond that, if you were, there are other recommendations that I could make, you know, understanding how the Emergency Operations Center works. It is, it is the, you know, the center of everything that we do. But at 1, 2, 7, and 8, and what did you find with the Texas? Was it, was it beyond that?
It was actually fairly generic in that code. It didn't say exactly which courses you had to take, it just said how many hours of training you must take each year. Like, it was only, it was very normal, it was like two or three hours of emergency course material in, because I initially thought there was some specific ones that they were required that are basic courses that everybody should take.
You know, to be consistent with your own board order to direct us to use the National Incident Management System, ICS 100, 200, 700, and 800 would be a natural, logical requirement to give yourselves.
I would love to get that information.
I'll send it to you. It's, it's independent study, you can do it at any time, you can stop and pick it up where.
Google ICS 100, it pops right up.
Yeah, yeah, it's good.
Let's send that to all five. Let's, let's send that to all five commissioners.
Okay, directly. Sounds good.
And then the contract, if you have any update on that, ODF contract.
Let's, I'll defer to Steve in terms of next steps, but this came on, this has come up on my radar several times over the last six months through land management, through the park staff, through, it came up at our wildfire tabletop. So I've been hearing about it for a number of months. The contract is expired and I think we can have a conversation. When I talked to Chris Klein at the wildfire tabletop, he seemed, and you're right, that it was, it was that there had been turnover. So somebody else has been here for the last couple of years and then he got back and went, the contract's expired. And so I think he thought, he thinks there are fundamental problems with the contract that it, that yes, it's very simple, but should it be? And, and could we unpack that a bit? But I, I feel like as a member of the community, his priority is around getting it back on track for the fire season, whatever that looks like. He seemed a lot less concerned with fixing it now than he was with sort of making us whole again. I think he's ready to have that conversation. I don't know what you heard from him.
Many of the same things. However, we're in wildfire season now and we are unprotected and Mount Pisgah is one of our golden parks. And we have people on that park hiking on a regular basis. Should there be an incident, we, the county is on the financial hook right now. So we need to be aware of that. And I think we at least need some kind of protection during fire season. And then if we need to overhaul the contract, we should look into that further after the season is over.
Okay.
That would be my personal advice.
I think that sounds great. We'll follow up with that. Yeah. And just as a matter of complete interest, I was asked by land management to host a tabletop exercise around a scenario involving a fire at Mount Pisgah, nothing to do with fire suppression, all to do with how the arboretum and the friends of Mount Pisgah and the park staff worked together during the response, who does what, where does the communication happen, how do we interface? And that was two weeks ago. So it's, it's on the minds of, of a number of our agency and inter-agency partners.
Great. Commissioner Buck?
It's kind of far distant beyond my point, but the bureaucracy of training can be overwhelming. And training for the sake of training is only good for the training, it's not good for the practical outcome. What we develop locally is far more important. And when Steve has a button to push, he needs to be able to push one button that, that not go back to some IS training, but that what do we do here locally? That's far more important. I don't particularly care to take IS trainings that are developed by, by an agency that's far removed from what we actually experience here. What I want is training developed by you that is specific to what we do here, that tells me at 2:00 in the morning when the phone rings, what do I do next? Not to let me sort through my trainings, my IS trainings, which one, who do I refer to? I, just what do I do next? And that's the most important thing.
No.
Training, training for the sake of training is just, it can be both overwhelming and it can be just self fulfilling. I'm, well, I'm trained. I spent four hours training, so I'm trained. Four hours training doesn't make me trained. You telling me what to do makes me trained.
I don't disagree with you. I think the value of the ICS training is that when an incident occurs, we shift into an entirely different organizational system and model. And, and even though, even people that have taken the course are still looking at their boss, even though they're in a new model. And so I think it, it's less about understanding it to navigate through it yourself and just realizing that there's, we're in a new system now.
And what is peculiar to us, you know, it doesn't flood in Texas. Oh, wait. Oh, gosh. You know, well, there are no wildfires in Texas. Oh, wait. Oh, gosh, you know, there are no trees in Texas. So how can there be a wildfire? Well, we know that it's not just trees. And we know that floods occur even when it's very, very dry out. So you're not, but that's Texas. What happens in Lane County, you know? And how do we respond based upon your experience and Patience's experience that she handed down to you? And, and what do we do to specifically be prepared for the next emergency, whether it's one we've experienced already or it's a new one like last year's ice storm that we've never really fully experienced before? What do we do? What, what is our muscle memory here? Not based on what they do in Texas, not based on what somebody sitting at a desk someplace came up with the emergency management for senior officials. Well, I better be able to do that.
Yeah.
You know, I better be able to make my neighbors know what they need to do right now.
That's great. I'm happy to put together any, any trainings.
You've done it already. This is what you're doing.
Question. Well, I understand both sides because I've taken up the ICS 700. So it is helpful when you go to the cooperators' room and you're watching how it's all working and you know the positions. That being said, we used to do tabletops for a couple hours a year to stay up on it. And you get all the different positions and then they'd throw a random problem at you and now you're the PIO. I mean, and, and that's the kind of stuff that keeps you sharp, but that's not what we do. So, I mean, understanding how it works is very helpful. Is it necessary? Probably not. I would say for me, and I think we've all agreed, but it's, it is the quickest, most accurate information we can get. Cause Steve talked about it earlier. It's those first couple hours. The Mapleton Fire, luckily I had people that I trust that were on site that were telling me what was going on. And this is just because you guys didn't know, but I mean, hours. And so I was updating my Facebook hours before I was getting information from the county. It was one of the deputies was over there and then, you know, another person that was on the, the fire staff. So I was, the question I wanted to ask is where do you get your quickest information from? And how can we receive it the quickest? Cause we were talking about those steps earlier. It wasn't a 20 minute delay. I took it as a, it was a 20 minute step that was removed from the process.
Yeah. Thank you. That's much better. And we, Devin also sets up a group chat at the beginning of the fire season and it's the sheriff's office, GIS, Devin, gosh, I'm not sure who else on there, TS, all the key players in those initial moments. And I think all of us just take responsibility for, if we hear something, we plug it into the group and that's where it starts. Once something looks like it's going to spin up into something significant, and by that point I've already texted Steve and Steve to let them know. Or maybe, you know, when the Dunes Fire started last week, I texted the group and said, hey, this is blowing up on watch duty, but I just heard they're mopping up and we're actual, they're just actually behind the game. So that's what's happening in that group chat. And when it looks like it's going to turn into something significant, my instructions are to head to the sheriff's office. That's where we're going to muster and kind of figure out what happens next. That's where those initial notifications and where we make the decision to sort of transition into the EOC, you know? And so I'm, I'm sending that information to Steve as it's happening in real time. And we're kind of starting to find our way with this, but I think, and then he's making that decision. Do I pass, you know, as it hit that threshold?
That would be an interesting threshold for us to talk about and know. Cause you kind of, I'm sure Buck does every time it goes off and it's in your district or in the county, but especially when it's in your district. This is a fire. It's going to be big and you're just watching watch duty doing the same thing. And I, I don't know what that, I guess if you guys were going to post it, an update on our webpage, that, is that the threshold?
We're not at that point. You know, Commissioner Beck texted me last week about the Salt Fire and we were just kind of monitoring it. Well, what I ended up sharing with her was what I got from Chief Wallace, you know, just, but, but I, I got it because I just wanted to know what was going on. And then I gave it to her because she asked for it, but we weren't, and I shared it with the group, but it didn't go any further than that.
Yeah. I mean, and the information is usually used Mapleton as an example. You found out about that who? From the people on the ground closest to it? I was thinking about the flooding incident we had, what was it in the late winter, fall? I mean, I think you were the first one that messaged a bunch of us because you would get, received information on Facebook, right? So there's social media. So the, the information is always going to come from the people on the ground and that's usually going to be, you know, before any of us had. And so it becomes really, once we receive that information, once it rises to, I would say Tiffany's level, certainly my level, my first thought and when it comes to any director level, the first, one of the first thoughts is, are the commissioners aware? And we need to let the commissioners know. And then we try to communicate with all five so you all have the same level of information. Usually the commissioner of the district, right? So Mapleton is in your district. So like you're going to hear about it from your people before, I don't know why.
It was Eugene, it was the neighborhood off the Fernridge Path.
Yeah. So you were here, hearing about.
The apartment, ground floor apartment folks who were flooding.
So I don't, I, we shouldn't be surprised if the commissioner of the district where the incident is happening hears about the information, because you're closest to those people. So they're going to reach out. You're going to hear it directly from them.
There's a fire on Furbute Road. Who do they call?
Great question.
When I, when I got the information, I sent out a text to everybody and I think I had messaged you maybe right before I sent it out to all the commissioners. You said, yeah, whatever, I heard an hour ago from sheriff's office folks or whatever. So.
And fire was on scene. And by the time we got there, OSP had already gone door to door and we'd evacuated. And so it was just, it all happened pretty fast.
It did. Yeah. That was luckily on both sides.
Tiffany, this page is wonderful. Our Lane County Emergencies Manager page, because it's malleable and it's, it's real time. Because if there isn't, something is happening, you get a masthead up there immediately and you only have one place to go. For me, all the training in the world cannot supplant that. And it's brilliant. It really is. And it's something that we've not had and it evolves. It gets better and better all the time. It gets more usable for me, but not just for me, but for the people who are experiencing the fire on Furbute. If, if they call me and I say, well, I'm not fully up to date. As you, as you say, Laurie, go to, press this button and you'll be fully up to date.
Thank you.
Yeah. Like an update on our website, the website, that's going to be a lagging thing. That's going to happen late. Like you're going to see if it's a fire watch duty, you're going to see social media. You should get a text. Commissioners should get it from me or somebody else saying, here's what's happening.
Lane Alerts.
Lane Alerts. Any of those things should come first. And then, you know, the banner update on our website, because it just takes a little bit of time to gather the information and then put the thing up there. But it's going to vary depending on the incident as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And it's never soon enough.
Another feature of that evacuation software is that it immediately feeds Raptor, which is the real time assessment tool of the state of Oregon. And so the minute we hit send, it shows up on the state map as a live evacuation. So what Devin's also done is, is putting a link to Raptor on the site. So unless and until she's able to coordinate and get a, an active map, people have gotten used to that. It's a good tool. It's effective. So we're going to continue to do that, but we'll have this interim thing that people can go to in the meantime to go to that live map on the state website.
Okay. Any more comments or questions for Tiffany? Great job. Thank you so much. It was very thorough. And I'm sure there's a lot left on that plate.
Whatever you want to hear, just let me know.
Again, thank you very much. We will move on to our last couple of items on our agenda for the day. So we'll just take a few minutes to kind of reset and refocus here just a bit. Our commissioners business, we have some announcements, comments, our committee reports. I lumped those all in last time. If you want to make any of those, feel free to jump right in and we'll start a lively discussion. Commissioner Buck, please.
It was only a couple of things. The NAACP has moved and I had an opportunity to tour their new area, which is at the old Clear Lake Elementary School in Bethel. And they're just getting their feet under them, but they have a lot more space than they used to. You know, the Boys and Girls Club was very active and is also co-located there along with Honey. And so it was a wonderful tour. So if you haven't had a chance to tour their new offices down there, they're no longer at the men's house. They're at the Clear Lake Community Center, I think is what it's called now. So that, I would highly encourage everybody to take a tour and see what they're working on now.
I've eaten so many lunches on Little Short Cherry.
No, it was, it was great. The other thing I wanted to share, it's just a quick shout out to Public Works. They have been updating my road the last week or so in 92, 93 degree weather. And it's just really hard, tough work, even when it's not in heat. But they've been doing a wonderful job and I wanted to publicly thank them.
Mr. Fur?
Well, you got your hand up. I'm going to thank you in, in my announcements. Last week, we had a MPC meeting and it, and you were absent. So, and it was, it was actually specifically the cable commission. So it was Eugene Springfield in Lane County. And we didn't have a quorum. We didn't have a quorum there. The, the mayor Eugene was going to be there, couldn't be there. So everybody's saying, well, how do we get a quorum? How do we pass? And it was very timely, what we had to do. So I called Ryan and Ryan said, yeah, I'll hop on. And you did. That's brilliant. And so we're able, and you didn't know much about what we were talking about, but the information was right there. So you were able to make an educated vote and we were able to pass it. So way to go. Way to just change your entire day and step into the MPC meeting and make that happen. Good job.
Yeah. While sitting at the desk, it worked out good. And they, yeah, thank staff too, because they sent me the agenda and the item and everything right then and there as you guys were discussing, reading and.
Sessions would be amazing, right?
Yeah.
So you did that during the meeting? Like they looped you in not a minute before, but as it was happening and.
As it was happening. I mean, I said, well, let me, let me make a quick phone call. And then the chair's chief, chief Rhodes, Randy Rhodes is, is the chair right now. And within 30 seconds, we had a quorum.
Wow.
Great job. Commissioner Seneca was ready to jump in and do it. So well done. That's the resilience and the ability that we, you know, that I think we can boast at Lane County.
Well, good idea. It's not Lane County, but.
I'm not done.
We were, oh, I'm sorry. I had my hand up first.
You did. Apart from the homelessness board, we have interviews for new board members this Friday. That'll be of course passed along to the Board of County Commissions for ratification. That's all. Thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Fur.
Well, I'm now on the MPC board, so it's, it's Harrisburg, but I have got to give that little community a shout out. We spent the day with them for the Fourth of July parade. And it's, it was just so impressive what they, what they put together. And I've done it in the past, but this year as we were setting up for the parade and we had all the kids ready to throw candy, my, my vehicle went through 60 pounds of candy.
Wow.
And I had a bunch of little throwers in the back, but we saw, we had the coolest flyover I've ever seen.
Yeah.
They came in just right through town. Everybody was setting up and besides your ears ringing, you couldn't, I mean, it was just silent. People were just looking as that fighter went by and it came straight up out of town and onto the next. But yeah, they just do, they, they do a great job.
They still use F-16s for something.
Yeah. Well, yeah. It's, it's an impressive machine, especially for the age of it. That's a good point. But yeah, so that was a lot of fun. Next year, if anybody's got time on the Fourth of July, Harrisburg does a good job.
Awesome. Mr. Truier, anything?
Nothing. Thank you.
Before I left, for after a couple of weeks ago, we had our, our Quarterly Association of Oregon and California Counties Meeting. Honestly, we're getting beat up a little bit, but we're still resilient and coming back with some fight left in us. It's still on my passion list because I think it's, you know, what we heard today, the need for revenue in our county is still something very valuable and viable. And I think our federal agencies are realizing that our area is still rich with resources. But I wanted to report this back to you. There's still a lot of back and forth on the reconciliation bill in the Senate. And after it's passed, it goes to the House, as you know, and it's passed there, it goes on for the president's signature. But it was mentioned at our meeting that the secure rural schools portion of that was dropped out of that Senate bill, but it was passed as a standalone piece of legislation and it was sent to the House for passage there. So when the secure rural schools was pulled out of the Senate reconciliation bill, it lost its funding, but the House is now trying to find $270 million to pay for it, which is not an easy lift, but it appears that Speaker Johnson's going to support that. So still the SRS money that we get, which was the replacement for our timber revenues is still, I think the legislative bodies and the elected officials in Washington realize that that's a really key piece to our survival as a, as a. that that's a really key piece to our survival as a, as a, as a county and our rural areas. So I, I think there's still a possibility that's going to at least Band-Aid us for another short season, but the remainder is, is that at some point, our, our fear is that also is going to go away, and we would find ourselves in more dire straits than we're in now. So I really appreciate the staff and the legal team of the Association of Oregon and California Counties for keeping that on our front burner and fighting that in the legal system and the, and the courts that we're still, and we still have a, a good fund that helps us to do that. So thankfully, they keep telling us, Lane County, thank you for coming back into the, the membership, because that dues has helped us sustain this legal battle and sustained our position as a, as a revenue generator in our force. So thank you again, Board, for allowing us to do that. Anybody else? So if not, any future board assignments or requests? I'm hearing a quiet table, so if there's nothing to review, Mr. Mel Kreske, we are about ready. Our next scheduled board meeting will be Tuesday, July 22nd, in Harris Hall. This regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners is adjourned.